Okay, it is 6:45. Could everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Feng?
Present.
Commissioner Linscolk?
Present.
Vice Chair Manipatla?
Present.
Chair Scharf?
Present. Okay, before we start, be advised that Commissioner Manipatla notified us yesterday that due to illness, he's requested permission to participate in tonight's meeting via Zoom and under the circumstances, with our approval, such participation is permitted under the Brown Act. So, Mooney, could you explain the basis for your request to participate via Zoom?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Chair Scharf. So, yeah. I've been here since like, you know, Sunday, so I wanted to attend, but you know, I didn't want, you know, come there and, you know, and spread the bug. So I've requested to attend remotely. So thank you for allowing me. And I also can confirm that, you know, there is nobody else, you know, 18 and above, you know, in this room at this point, right? Just myself attending remotely.
Okay, very good. So I'll make a motion to allow Commissioner Manipatla to participate remotely. Can I have a second for that?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote? We don't vote with the lights.
Commissioner Feng? Commissioner Linscolk?
Yes.
Vice Chair Manipatla?
Am I allowed to vote on this?
Can he vote on this, Michael?
Oh.
No.
No.
Sorry, disregard. Chair Scharf?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. Let me go back to the agenda. Okay, are there any postponements, Madam City Clerk?
No postponements.
Okay. Okay, now we're on to oral communications. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter within our jurisdiction, but not on the agenda. You get three minutes, and in most cases, state law will prohibit us from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Do we have any cards for oral?
We have one blue speaker card, and I see one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, very good. The first speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I'm here, I'm going to use the overhead, if you can show it. I'm here to talk about the housing element and the lack of public discussion on the goals, policies, and strategies. The planning commissioners have asked, housing commissioners have asked, council has asked for discussion and input, and nothing's happened. The reason is because some of these policies and strategies don't, people don't understand them when they read it. This is one example. Strategy HE 1.3.6, "Allow corner lots in R1 zoning districts to develop as using R3 zoning regulations." Translation, every single family home located on a corner lot all across Cupertino can become an apartment. They can use density bonus to take away height and set back restrictions. No discussion, no public awareness, nothing, no input. If people are watching, you can't read it, but all the tan areas are R1 across the city. So that impacts the entire city, and the entire city ought to have an opportunity to discuss this and ask questions. Same thing continued, lots zoned for single-family that share a property line on major arterials and collectors can also do R3 apartments. Translation, every single home located behind or around a shopping center can become apartments. That's behind Jo-Ann Fabrics, behind DISO, behind Home Goods, all of those. And again, no discussion, no public awareness, nothing. Please put this on an agenda, not information, not consent, on a real agenda item that we can talk about it and ask questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. Now we have one hand raised on Zoom. Welcome, San R.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I wish to draw to your attention that the cancellations agenda item that went through Planning Commission at the last meeting, and that was approved by the City Council, led to the change in allowed use of 23 city properties that are zoned BA. I ask you, are you aware of the addresses of these 23 properties? We understand that of the 23, 14 were schools. They were public schools belonging to CUSD and FUHSD. It seems that of the 23 and 14, the remaining nine, five of them were city-owned properties, and two of them were fire district-owned properties, and there was one each from the Anza Hotel College and PJN. I request the Planning Commission to please obtain the addresses of all 23 properties for which the allowed use was changed, so that the public is made aware of which city properties have had allowed use changed, and what the implication of that is going to be. Specifically, we are interested in understanding if, under the pretext of this cancellations item, the allowed use of city-owned properties has been changed that now permits a broader range of use that was previously not allowed. I request the Planning Commission to please ask some hard questions here, because the public is unable to ask these questions and get appropriately clear and transparent answers. I also want to echo the comments of the previous speaker, to please put on your agenda housing element topics and buildings remedy topics. The adjacent cities of La Saldos and Saratoga are having active agenda items in their planning commissions and city council on housing element. It appears that our city Planning Commission only seems to cancel meetings. And I ask Chair, do you have input on these cancellations? And if so, why are these meetings canceling? The public deserves to know how and why these meetings get canceled, and why you have not met since May. I hope we will hear from you, Chair, answers to these questions as to why these meetings are canceling, and to not see any further cancellations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I realize we forgot, I forgot to do the approval of the minutes before oral, so we'll go back to do the minutes approval from the November 14 meeting. So if you, everyone could take a second to look at those minutes, the draft minutes. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote with our lights.
Actually, I did have one comment.
Okay.
Maybe as an adjunct to the actual printed minutes, the meeting was recorded and is on YouTube, but is actually showing up with the wrong year. It's showing up as November 14, 2022, instead of 2023.
In the description of the video?
Yes.
We'll let the video crew know. Thank you for that.
Okay, so now let's vote.
Chair.
Chair. Oh, we have to do oral. We have, okay, yeah, we have to vote, yeah, because Mooney is not here. So, yeah, let's have a voice vote.
Commissioner Feng?
Yes.
Commissioner Linscolk?
Aye.
Vice Chair Manipatla?
Yes.
Chair Scharf?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now, let me go back to the agenda here. One second. Okay. Sorry. Ah, sorry. Okay, here we go. We are on to public hearing with nothing on consent, so any written communications for oral? I don't think so, was there? No, okay. So we're on to public hearings. Item 2, "Application to Consider the Construction of a Seven-Unit Townhome Development and Associated Environmental Review." The application includes demolition of an existing fourplex subdivision for condominium purposes only, architectural review, associated tree removal, application number DP 2023001, ASA 2023002, TM 2023001, and TR 2023008. Applicant Leon Hu of Top Mission Realty and Investment, location 10046 Bianchi Way, assessor parcel number 35907-021. So, I mean, we have the staff report.
Certainly. Good evening, Planning Commission. I am here to introduce Danielle Condit, Associate Planner with our Planning Division, and she will present the staff report on this. Just a reminder that it is an addition of only three units above what exists on the site today, which is a fourplex. So with that, I'll hand it over to Danielle. And this also includes a density bonus waivers and concessions, and she'll talk about it in a little bit more detail. Thank you.
Button 3. Good evening, Chair Scharf and Commissioners. As Pew said, I am Danielle Condit. I am an Associate Planner here at the City of Cupertino. Today, staff brings before you the Leon Townhouse Development located at 1046 Bianchi Way. The application is to consider a development permit, architectural site approval, tentative final map, and tree removal for the demolition of an existing fourplex and construction of a seven-unit townhome development. The application was submitted as an SB 330 application and is generally subject only to objective standards to the ordinances and policies in effect at the time of the preliminary application when that was submitted. Additionally, the project has been submitted as a density bonus application, allocating 10% or in this case, one unit of the total dwelling units of the housing development sold to persons and families of moderate income. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan use designation of commercial residential. The site is located in the heart of the city crossroads sub-area. The primary use of the crossroads sub-area is commercial and residential. The subject site is located on a residential cul-de-sac just off of Stevens Creek Boulevard corridor behind a commercially-used lot that fronts Stevens Creek Boulevard. The site has a maximum residential potential of nine units, which is rounded up from eight and a half units based on the maximum density of 25 dwellings per acre. Through density bonus law, the allowed bonus of 9% would allow the density up to 10 units on this location. However, the applicant is not proposing to build up to 10 units. They are requesting waivers and concessions, parking reduction under density bonus law. The seven units proposed are consistent with what is allowed by the general plan. The project site sits on a 3.4-acre parcel and proposes two new residential buildings. Building A is a three-story, 30-foot building with four attached townhomes. This building is located along the rear of the lot. Building B is similar in design height, but it is located at the front of the lot along Bianchi Way. The units range in size from 2,067 square feet and as large as 2,089 square feet, with approximately 400 square foot, two garages for each unit. One median-income unit has been provided, shaded in blue in the diagram. The unit is compared comparable in proposed square footage, room count, bath count as the market rate units. A new public sidewalk with landscape parkways and street trees have been proposed in front of the property. The tentative final map has been submitted with this application as well. The parcel will include a condominium map for the division of airspace for the seven units. The condition of approval has been added to the tentative map that would allow reciprocal easements for access for vehicle, emergency vehicles, public access, as well as public art and sewer easements. The project site is currently developed with two single-story residential structures. It is an existing four-unit development. It is an active rental property operating on a month-to-month lease. The property is not registered in the city's below-market rate program and not operated as a rent-controlled or income-restricted units. Therefore, any rental dwellings, units vacated or demolished preceding this application are not subject to replacement of affordable units in accordance with the government code. Per density bonus law, the applicant may request unlimited waivers or reductions of development standards that will have the effect of physically precluding the construction of the project. The project includes requests through state density bonus law for parking reduction, waivers from setbacks, common open space, as well as access easements, or sorry, service access. Additionally, the applicant has requested one concession for the removal of a coastlive oak tree at the rear of the property. The applicant has requested a waiver from the minimum 20-foot front setback as taken from the public right-of-way dedication line, and proposes a nine-foot setback at the first and second, at the first and third floors, and a six-foot setback from the second floor. The rear setback waiver is requested from the minimum 45-foot setback, 45-foot rear setback. The project proposes a 15-foot setback at the first and third floors and a 12-foot setback at the second floor. The red-traded hatched areas illustrate the building's encroachment into the front and rear setbacks, and implementing the front and rear setbacks would cause the building to be redesigned. Additionally, the applicant requests waivers from the minimum 15-foot side setbacks, the proposed, and proposes a 10-foot setback along both sides of the structures, except Building B along the right side of the property, which will propose a 28- and 6-inch setback from the right-side property line, and will comply with the standards. Waivers from the building design form has also been requested. The Heart of the City specific plan requires that residents or buildings adjacent to residential developments are stepped back at a one-and-a-half to one height ratio. The green hatched, the green hatching in the image illustrates a 28- and 6-inch setback at the second floor and a 45-foot setback at the third floor, causing the building to be redesigned if implemented. Additional waivers include common open space waiver, which would require up to 1,050 square feet of open space, as well as the service access easement, which would require the trash hauler to enter onto the site. Imposing the city's setback, common open space, and service access requirements would physically preclude the development of Buildings A and B as proposed. Under state density bonus law, the city may not deny a proposed project based on the theory that another project with a similar number of units might be designed differently and accommodated without waivers from the development standards. Further, through state density bonus law, the applicant may use the parking standards established in the legislation. The municipal code would require the project to provide 20 or 14 covered parking spaces and six uncovered parking spaces. However, since at least 10% of the total base residential units would provide, or one unit in this case, would be provided to a median-income household, the applicant may use a standard of one and a half spaces per unit, per state density bonus law. Per the table shown on your screens, the city code would require 20 spaces. However, through state density bonus law, only 11 are required. The applicant has proposed 14 parking spaces total, two spaces per unit. Excuse me. The tree removal and density bonus incentive, the applicant is proposing the removal of 10 trees on-site, three of which have previously been removed, Trees 3, 4, 3, 2, 3, and 4, which are centered at the right property line, center of the property line. Applicant is requesting to remove Tree Number 9, which is 38.5-inch coastlive oak, which is in good condition. As a density bonus incentive, the applicant is asking to remove this tree. The ERBRIS report outlines that the planned construction is scheduled to have an excavation within seven feet of the structural root zone, causing, sorry, of the structural root zone, causing severe risk to the structural integrity of the oak tree. Additionally, retaining the tree would require the applicant to cost up to $6 million of having to redesign the project and possible loss of units. Removal of the tree saves them approximately $5.9 million, and therefore, they are requesting a density bonus incentive to remove the tree. The applicant will replace 10 removed trees on-site. Of the 10, or 24-inch box trees on-site, five Jerusalem thore and five blue oak. In addition, an in-lu tree replacement fee of $27,400 will be provided for the eight 24-inch box replacement trees that cannot be accommodated on-site, and for the removal of Tree 9, the 38.5-inch coastlive oak. This valuation is calculated based on the ISA Guide for Plant Appraisal and Landscape Appraisers, and as required as by the municipal code. The landscape plan shows here the locations of the proposed new trees, as well as three new street trees in the right-of-way. The construction and occupancy of the project, the construction and occupancy of the project would not result in any significant impacts on the environment and has been determined exempt in accordance to SEQUET guidelines 15332 in Field Development. In conclusion, staff recommends the approval of the project because the project and conditions of approval address the concerns related to the proposed development. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission make the following recommendations. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Does the applicant have a presentation or not?
The applicant does have a presentation. I believe Mike Wilson is in the crowd, and I do have his application ready.
Do I stand here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, I will put up your presentation right now.
Thank you, Danielle. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission. I'm Michael Wilson. I'm here in behalf of Leon Hu. In tow is Larry Wang. He's our architect, and I brought Jay along from my company. Danielle did a fantastic job of doing the outline of exactly what it is that we're hoping to get approved and proposed for the City of Cupertino. What we have is in our slideshow, it's essentially the same sort of information that Danielle had presented to y'all. If we look at the next slide.
Mike, could you just be sure to speak into the microphone?
Yes. Yes, I will.
Thank you.
You bet. So this is the rendering of what the development will look like facing Bianchi. We discussed that this is the B side of the units, so to the backside of that is the four units that are going to be similar in design and height, with the waivers of the setback, obviously, without the redesign. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. Can we go to the next slide, please? So our site plan is essentially with the same site, the plan that Danielle had showed. Ultimately, it is the tree removal process and the replacement of these trees. It's important to the applicant. These tenancies are occupied currently, and so Leon Hu has tried to come up with a good plan and solution to try to help facilitate a move of the current tenants when that time comes. If we could look at the next slide, please. So again, project housing information, so affordable housing for the one unit that we showed you earlier highlighted in blue. Ultimately, it's 17,900 square feet. Seven new townhouse units ranging from 2,067 square feet to 2,089, with an additional 400, give or take, feet for each parking garage. We're looking for the waivers, for the setbacks, for the front, the back, and the side. We're also looking for the covered parking spaces that we're providing, 14, with the requirement of 11, two per unit. And I think this is getting close to the end of what we have to present. We welcome the opportunity and look forward to answering any questions that the commission may have.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, yeah, before we ask questions, let's go to public comment, if we have any.
We have one blue speaker card and one hand raised on Zoom.
Great. Okay. Okay, welcome. I can't read the first name, but last name is Carlton.
I think it's Lynn. Is it Lynn?
It is Lynn.
Oh, Lynn Carlton, welcome. Would you like to speak?
I can't reach any of the mics.
Oh, do we have a portable mic we can bring?
Okay, he's put it down. Is that good?
I don't know if you've received any of the paperwork that I submitted today. We have deep concern because we have a disabled housing complex of low income at the end of the street. A lot of us use the road because the sidewalk's a little rough. It's smooth to you, but it's not smooth to us. And we are concerned about the traffic on the road with another 14 possible cars. We have a high-density traffic pattern on that little tiny cul-de-sac now, currently, and we're concerned that this is, the density is too high. You know, four or five, yes, not seven, nine, 10. It's too high. Did you, did anybody receive the paperwork I submitted today?
We got one written communication signed by a bunch of residents on Bianchi Way.
Yeah, that was me.
Yeah, we did get that.
You did get that?
Yes.
And we were just deeply concerned about the density is too high and maybe not enough parking spots for those large homes. I call them large because we're a lot smaller. And we have children and other people using that road that are not cars. I know that it may not sound right, but some of these people can't use the sidewalk because it's just too rough for them, the bumps, you know? So we're very, very concerned. We would like to see the density go down. I was told there was no parking by one of my neighbors tonight, that there was no parking plan, but I hear this is different now. There's 14, there's two spots for seven units. Most people, you know, in two- or three-bedroom homes, there's two or three cars. We only have six on street parking spots now, and more than half of those are taken up.
Okay.
Any response?
I mean, I did go out and visit Bianchi Way today, and I do see what you mean about the limited parking there.
Very much so. I'm one of these that uses the street parking for second car because we're only allowed one car on our property.
So you're in the Mid-Penn development there?
Yes, sir. Yes, I am. I've been there for 38 years.
Wow.
I was one of the original tenants. There's one other, so.
Okay, so we, yeah, we will discuss this when we bring it back to the Planning Commission.
Can I be included in any of that discussion?
We may ask you questions.
Okay, and I'll do my best to answer them, but I am hearing impaired, so in, limited, so sometimes, like, there's a lady speaking over here earlier. I really couldn't hear her. I could see her, but I couldn't hear her.
All right, so, yeah, if we have questions, we will ask you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye. And now we have San R. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair. I would like to request you to see what you can do to not waive the parking requirement, because parking is a premium in that area. Parking cannot overflow onto Stevens Creek, as there is no parking on Stevens Creek. The adjacent lot is a fairly busy boba shop, Mr. Sun, which itself has very limited parking. And then the other side is further commercial properties, and so there's really not much room there for parking overflow. Appreciate looking at what you can do. I understand you are constrained, but looking at what you can do to maintain parking at the optimum level that you can, and also to save the trees, particularly the live coastlive oak. If that can be saved, that'd be great. Appreciate anything you can do to maintain. that can be saved, that'd be great. Appreciate anything you can do to maintain Cupertino's canopy and not let a precious, mature, live coast log be lost because the developer did not factor that in in their plans. Hopefully, you can save our canopy there and save the parking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that is all the speakers, so now we can bring it back to, back to the planning commission. Who would like to go first?
Excuse me, Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This may be a good time to ask whether any commissioners had any site visits or ex parte communications before you start asking questions.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know we were required to disclose site visits. I did not have any ex parte communications, though, but I did visit the site. Anybody else?
Yeah, I did not visit the site and just said hello to the applicants when I came in, so.
Same here.
Okay, how about Mooney?
Nothing from me, so I know that location very well because I live close by.
Right, okay. So, okay, I guess I can go first. I have to say I'm really disappointed in this project. All those waivers, yeah, I know, you know, under state law, we have to grant the waivers and concession, but it's just such a poorly designed project. We're losing four naturally affordable rental units to build seven expensive townhouses. It's totally inadequate parking. Fourteen spaces for seven units. Even if everyone only had two vehicles, there's no spaces for guests. And I, you know, sympathize with the residents saying, oh, you know, they park on the street. I don't know where all these cars are going to go to park. As San mentioned, there is no parking on Stevens Creek Boulevard. You can't park in those commercial spaces. Yeah, it's, it'd just be very, a very long walk for all those extra cars. And what I didn't understand, and maybe you can explain, where are the density bonus
I can help answer that question if everybody can hear me. So, density bonus law is strange about this. You do not need to provide density bonus units. You just need to qualify as a density bonus project in order to receive the density bonus waivers, incentives, and the parking reduction.
Okay, so how did this qualify?
The reason being that they provided ten percent of the base units as affordable because they're providing one of the units in the project as a affordable unit to median income levels.
So, oh, so it's moderate income?
Correct.
Okay, so that's it. One moderate income unit, and they qualify for unlimited waivers.
That is state law, yes.
And how many concessions?
One concession, six waivers.
Wow, okay. Are we allowed to do permit parking on the street, and how would that, how would that work? Would we have to give it to everyone that lives on the street, or?
Permit parking comes as a request from the residents of the neighborhood, so if there is a request, then that would be processed through the Public Works Department, and the program is run by Public Works. I'm not entirely sure about the particulars of the program.
Okay. The other question, so this approval is not discretionary, really, is what I'm hearing, is they qualify under SB three-thirty in density bonus for all the waivers of the setbacks and for all of that?
That is, that would probably be most accurate under state law.
Let's see. Do these townhomes, are they going to have solar on all of them?
Not at the moment.
Okay, was that a requirement, Pio, I thought?
They have to be, they have to meet our REACH code requirements that are codified in the municipal code and the building code, so as long as they do that, and how they meet that, that would be something that, they'd have to comply with whatever our municipal code requirements, whether that is for solar or REACH code or any of the...
Okay, because I thought the coach house, which we approved earlier this year, I thought that had been required to have solar on the roofs somehow.
They will just simply have to comply with the municipal code. When the building permits are issued, we'll just make sure that they comply with whatever's in the municipal code.
Okay.
I just conferred with Larry, the architect, and the units will, are intended to have solar.
Okay.
At some point.
Okay. You can sit down now. If we have any questions, we'll ask you.
Lovely, thank you. Thank you for the...
Okay. And, you know, to the residents that signed that letter that we received today, you know, as, as you've heard, the city's hands are tied due to laws that the state legislature has mandated that cities approve these types of projects despite the negative impacts. So, you know, I would apologize about that, but it's not something that, that we can do anything about. So, anyone else have any comments?
I just had a question. So, how many parking spaces are there on Bianchi Way right now? Like, can anybody park up in seven, six?
Six, and one is really tiny.
And the rest of it is no parking allowed?
Right, the two sides, because the road is only room for two cars, one in each direction. My understanding, when they, when I first moved there, that if that property was developed, they'd have to put the road back to a certain point. There's a crumbly sidewalk that somebody put in. It's all buckled up. I'm assuming it's going back to that to line up with the sidewalk that currently goes like this, like a Z shape. And the residents don't like to use that, and a lot of times, like today, there was a dump truck that was parked over that Z part. Nobody could get through there, so we have to go out in the street and then around. So, it's a really tiny spot. It's like a subcompact spot. Anything else I can answer? Okay.
So, I guess, I guess I would probably ask a question about solar capability, whether that was something that was intended in the design, if, if you're not actually having a solar installation there. Okay. So in general, in general, looking at this, I think that going to, going to, to slightly higher density in the area adjacent to, you know, to, to a planned area, and this is, you know, close to the center of town, you know, I think that that's, you know, this is probably a good thing. Generally feel the design is good. I am concerned, I do, would raise a concern that, that the, although the parking is provided in excess of the requirement, that it is, I think it is unusual to not have visitor parking. And I don't know whether that's something that perhaps you want to talk to the adjacent businesses about whether you can make a deal there. But that would be something I would, I would consider. I think that it's probably... It would be hard for me to imagine that wouldn't at times be an issue in that, in that development. I was kind of hoping, you know, there might be, I kind of looked at the plan a little bit, trying to see, well, is there some way to do that? I, I didn't really see a way to, to do that, to make the spots that were accessible, so. Otherwise, I think that, you know, it, it, it seems like a, it seems like a good design. I guess I would, they're large in size. They're going to be relatively expensive, you know, as, as called on the report. So, you know, I, I think it's unfortunate there wasn't a way, maybe that, that could be more moderate, you know, in the mixture of, of homes there, but, you know, I understand, I understand that, you know, cost of development does make it, make it challenging. So, I think that would be my comment.
Okay, Mooney?
Thank you, Chair. I have some questions. The staff, so in the agenda packet, I saw fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty, somewhere in that square footage, whereas, you know, the applicant presentation, they showed seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet, right? So there's about three thousand square feet difference. I'm trying, can someone clarify that?
Yes, so, if I may, the four thousand square foot number comes from the livable space of the units, the first floor, second floor, and third floor. The additional square footage you're hearing is coming from the garage calculations.
No, no, I'm, no, I'm talking about, no, the, the site, the parcel size, the land. Is it fourteen thousand nine hundred something, or it's seventeen thousand nine hundred?
I can help answer that. I believe there is a dedication along the frontage of the property, and I think that discrepancy that you're seeing is related to that. So currently, as it exists today, it would be seventeen thousand, whatever, whatever, but after dedications, it would become fourteen thousand, whatever the numbers are.
And based on the current zoning for this property, how many dwelling units are entitled for them? You know, forget about the, the state laws, but density bonus and all that, just, you know, based on the current zoning?
Based on current zoning, the site could build up to eight units, eight and a half, but rounded up to nine.
Nine, okay, so, so, that's, that's fair. And what's the number of units that we considered in the housing element that's going through the approval right now for this site?
This site is in the pipeline for the, in the housing element with the seven units that they have proposed, with one of the units being attributed to the median income levels.
Okay, it's the same. It's like, you know, seven units considered in the housing element, and that's what they are building.
Exactly what is, what they proposed.
Okay. So, the written communications had quite a few signatures about, you know, loss of privacy. For me, you know, the privacy is an important thing, right? So, but when I look at this development, on one side, you know, there is this shopping complex, and the other side is church, and on the north side, it's, you know, that small boba place, I forgot the name of that, right? So, I'm just trying to see, you know, where the privacy concern is coming from, like, you know, which are the homes that would lose privacy because of this, you know, three-story development? Can somebody, you know, put up a, the site on the, you know, projector or something? I don't know. I just want to see where that concern is coming from.
We're trying to pull an aerial up so that you could see that. In general, the residential single-family homes or the townhomes are across the street, so there's no direct privacy impacts. And as Danielle mentioned, this project was applied under SB three-thirty, which vests the applicant to the objective standards that were in place at the time of application. And in this particular case, there are no objective standards that relate to privacy protection for, for development of this kind in this zoning district. However, with that said, the applicant is planting replacement trees in the front yard. There are two trees in the front yard, and in addition, they're also planting, I believe it is one tree along the eastern property line or the southern property line, which really between the distance of these units from the existing homes and the trees and the landscaping that's going to be planted, privacy is, should not be impacted based on this because nobody's yards are necessarily facing this development.
Yeah, that's my understanding. You know, none of them are facing, you know, directly to this property, right? So, backside is church, and the front side is another shopping complex, right?
That's right.
Okay. And there is a complex, you know, on the cul-de-sac, you know, towards, again, not the, if you can pull up the aerial image, that'd be great. I just want to...
Commissioner Madipatla, can you see that?
I'm not seeing anything. Oh, yeah, now I see, yeah. It's very small. So, let's see. The, the, the unit, you know, to the south, that seems like, you know, somewhat relatively newly built, right? Like, you know, not like, you know, twenty, thirty years ago kind of thing, right? And does that comply with, you know, all the setback requirements and all that stuff?
Commissioner Madipatla, are you talking about the one that's labeled one zero zero nine two on this aerial?
No, I think he meant, he meant north, two zero nine four, some, nine. Is that the one you meant, the one on Stevens Creek?
No, no, not that one. That, that, that one...
That's north, okay.
Yeah, that's north. I'm talking about the south.
So, one zero zero nine two.
I think he's talking about the immediately south of, of the person, okay, yeah.
The, the white roofs that you see immediately south of the subject property are, I believe, they're carports.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, those are corrugated sheet covers for the parking.
They're, they're, they're carports for whom, for which property?
Those are carports for the building further south of that. That is the Leblou development.
Yes, that's the one that I was referring to. So that one, that complies with all the setback requirements and all that, right?
While that is not the subject of this particular hearing, my understanding is they would have had permits in place.
Okay, okay, good. So, I, I'm struggling with, you know, the parking, no parking for guests, and since these are townhomes, you know, they won't have, like, you know, driveway, even to park on the driveway besides, you know, two car garage. So, is sacrificing one unit for guest parking, is that an option? Probably a question to the developer or applicant.
Yeah, can the applicant answer?
If I heard your question correctly, can we reduce the amount of total units by one? Is that...
Sir, if you'd come up to the microphone.
Yeah, come to the mic. Yeah, the question was a suggestion to reduce it by one in order to have space for guest parking.
Yeah, onsite guest parking, because, you know, I, I can't see guest parking anywhere else, right? Like, you know, and, and shit, your car garage is not going to be, you know, guest parking, so where are they going to park?
Can I make a quick comment before?
Sure.
So, I mean, I think the one easy way to solve this would be to come to an arrangement with one of the commercial properties on either side to allow a certain number of guest parkings. That would, you could probably accommodate a lot more than just, you know, whatever one apartment's or one townhouse is worth, so.
Lovely. I appreciate you for saying that because that was going to be the avenue that I was going to ask if that would, what we want to explore in the first place.
That, you know, that's fine in the short term, but I am sure that that Mr. Sun site is also going to be redeveloped into something where they would also have parking issues.
Sorry, fortunately, we've got commercial property like the church. We have the commercial to the north and then over to the east, and so we have an opportunity to have these discussions with numerous tenants as opposed to just the one at the north.
So, just for my clarity, just so that I understand, applicant is using state density bonus law to request density bonus, but I believe, you know, there is no new units added, just, you know, the same whatever entitled for is what they're building. There's no new density. Reduction in parking requirements and density bonus waivers from setbacks, right? And common open space and service access requirements. These are all the waivers that are being requested. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make comments?
Yeah, go.
I'm associated with the church.
No, no, sorry. Only if we ask your questions.
So, I think the design looks good. I think you guys have used the space efficiently. I mean, it would be nice to have more setback, but I, you know, I think it's, it's a fairly efficient use of the space. I do think you should consider setting some, you know, getting some guest parking contract in place with, with the neighboring commercial properties. I did have the same question about solar. I thought my understanding was solar was required on buildings up to three-story. So I would like to see solar on these homes as well as electric charging stations in each of the garages for EV cars. So I don't know if you can address that.
Sure. Yeah, solar is part of the development plans for the project, so it will be added.
At what timeline?
At...
Are we talking about eventually or at the time of development?
I believe at the time of development.
Solar will be required as, as part of the development, so it will be done in the building permit stage. So it'll be shown in our plan during the building permit stage. I do want to address, come back to the sidewalk issue, the neighbors concerned. We did dedicate eight-foot sidewalk. There's no sidewalk there right now. So we did dedicate, that's why commissioner is asking about why there's a four thousand square foot shortage. So that was dedicated, that's actually going to be dedicated to the city, making the sidewalk a lot more accessible to the, to the public, to the neighbors. To address the parking again, I know parking is always a concern in this kind of discussion. We did provide two per unit. We have now reached out to the neighbors who's the church, that it's usually empty except during the weekends. So I think that would be a good solution for us to approach to the church, who is very friendly to this development here. So I think that might be a solution there. There's plenty, plenty of parking in the church that it's majority empty during the daytime, except weekends. So I think that would be something that we can consider and approaching the church to make some kind of agreement for the guest parking.
Larry, and one, one final question that she asked is, or that was asked was about the recharging stations within the garages.
So recharging station, it's usually owner's choice. We will have enough power. So usually a project size like this is two hundred M per unit. So there will be plenty of juice for, for the, for charger station if it's needed. So we will usually prepare what we call a solar-ready or charger station-ready project. So that will be done this way.
Wait, wait, you just said it will be solar-ready?
No, it will be solar, sorry, charger station-ready, I'm sorry.
And then are there any plans for battery storage?
I can't answer that at this point, that is more a technical question that we have during the building permit stage, which I think is very feasible to do that nowadays. The, the cost becomes a lot more affordable nowadays.
Yeah, and, yeah, adding it on afterwards is expensive. And with the new net energy metering three point oh, it makes a lot more sense now for the owners to have the battery storage.
So what we usually during the design stages is we have the conduit design and ready for the future resident, future buyers, if they decide to do the solar, to do the, the battery pack if it's needed. So that's usually the case. Developers, I rarely see developers, developers put those in yet, but we will have that ready, a solar, sorry, the conduit ready for the solar pack.
Okay. The batteries will not be, battery's not included, but can be added on.
We are really early in this stage, right, enough for a battery. It's just basically a planning application. So during the, during the building permit stage, we were certainly concerned, we were certainly include those elements into the building, building permit stage.
Yeah, at the very minimum of the backbone, if it is actually added to the end of the.
Right, as long as there's a space to put them.
Solar, yes.
Yeah, solar, of course. Is there a place for batteries if somebody, if a buyer wanted to put them in?
We did, you know, appears a good suggestion is, we actually enlarge our, 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 our garage, which is a little bigger than is required, so there's a little more space inside the garage to install the power battery if it's needed.
Okay.
And if I may jump in just really quick to answer the question about the, the EV chargers, it is in our code that one, if you are a townhome or a, a single-family home with enclosed garages, one of the spaces needs to be level two ready and the other one has to be level one ready.
Okay.
Actually, Commissioner Lindskog had another question about the appliances. It, I think it's, I think everything is electric anyway.
Oh, electrical nowadays. Oh, electric nowadays, right, right.
Great.
Sorry, does that mean there'll be electric heat pump, water heater and heat pump HVAC?
Will be all heat pump.
Be all heat pump?
Including the water heater will be heat pump.
Great.
Just as a, I noticed something funny on the plans. It looks like each unit has two air conditioning units, is that correct?
We haven't gone to that depth in the mechanic design, but yes, I think you're right. Probably two, probably two units, one for common space and one for the bedrooms.
I see.
Nowadays, nowadays, what we usually do is a split unit, which is only one condenser that can handle up to three fan coil units.
I didn't know if that was because of the three floors, it was just, it was just an interesting thing I noticed.
Right, right, and that's what we do nowadays.
Oh, so one compressor can power multiple evaporators?
Multiple evaporators, correct, right.
Interesting, okay.
And, and the good thing about those condensers, they are very quiet nowadays.
Yeah, I know we do have rules about, about the noise. It actually has been a problem with people wanting to replace noisier compressors with quieter ones, but the quieter ones were still too noisy. And so they had to keep the noisy one because they couldn't get, get approved for the replacement. But that's for another day.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, thank you, anything else by anyone before we go to the resolutions?
So Chair, you're closing the public hearing?
Yeah, if there's, yeah, I will close the public hearing and we will move on to the, the resolutions. Somebody wants to start, you want to start, David?
Sure. So on the first resolution, which is currently numbered as XXXX, but appears on page thirty-one of the packet. Let's see. The Planning Commission of the City of Cupertino recommends approval of the development permit for a seven-unit townhome development located at one hundred forty-six Bianchi Way. And then we recommend that the project as proposed is categorically exempt from the SEQA Act under the class thirty-two SEQA exemption. And the proposed residential development will only produce three net units. So it can be seen that it's compatible with the general plan designation and that we approve the developmental permit indicated as Exhibit A with no changes.
Okay. One second.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, let's vote with our lights.
No.
No, no lights, I'm sorry. Yeah, roll call vote.
Commissioner Fang?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindskog?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madipatla?
Can I say something before I vote?
It's very brief, but we already closed discussion.
Yeah, no, I'm kind of conflicted on this one, you know, the number of units seems okay, but you know, the parking and setbacks are a big, big for me. So I'm, I'm going to say no. I understand, you know, just state law.
Okay.
And then Chair Sharf?
Aye.
So the motion carries with Vice Chair Madipatla voting no and mystery absent.
Okay. Let's go to the next one. Oh, this is also, this is XX. Now I'm confused on which XX it is because.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm looking at ASA twenty twenty-three oh oh two, is that the one?
This is page sixty-four, I think, is the next one.
This is for Exhibit B, okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it as well.
Yeah, go ahead, you do it, you're good.
All right. I move that the Planning Commission adopt, is marked in our packet, is resolution number XXXX again. This appears on page sixty-four of the packet. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cupertino recommending approval of development permit for a seven-unit townhome development located at Bianchi Way. Wait a second, this is a duplicate of the other, isn't it?
If I may.
This is Exhibit B now.
Exhibit D, oh.
B is in boy.
B, B is in boy.
If I may suggest, just to make it simpler, we did have a recommended action as part of our presentation. It just simplifies this to saying that as the attachments A, B, and C, if, if it simplifies the motion.
Okay, yes. So, so how shall I, how shall I do this?
You could suggest that you move the staff recommendation?
Yes, the staff recommendations. Page fourteen? Okay, yeah.
Is this a motion just for the architectural and site approval permit or for the remaining, all, all of them?
Yes, yes. So move to approve the following permits. The development permit, development permit DP twenty twenty-three oh oh one. Architectural and site improvement, site approval permit ASA twenty twenty-three oh oh two. The tentative final map TM the twenty twenty-three oh oh one. And the tree removal permit TR twenty twenty-three oh oh eight. Those are attachments one, two, three, and four in the packet.
Okay, but we had already voted on the first one, so.
Maybe, maybe we're doing two through three.
Right, so it should be.
Two, three, four.
Two, three, and four, okay.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Commissioner Fang?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindskog?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madipatla?
No.
Chair Sharf?
Aye.
The motion carries with Vice Chair Madipatla voting no and mystery absent.
Okay. Very good, let's, so, yeah, that ends this item. Let me reopen the agenda, one second. Okay, so I guess we are on to item three. Sign exception to allow two wall signs for a single tenant Shane Company in an existing retail building, application EXC twenty twenty-two oh oh four, applicant Kevin Tallman. Schenko location is at nineteen nine hundred Stevens Creek Boulevard, accessory parcel number three six nine oh five dash oh four four. Can we have the staff report?
Yes, thank you again. Chair, I would like to introduce John Martir, Senior Planner with the Planning Division, who will be presenting the staff report for the Shane Company sign exceptions.
Good evening, everybody, John Martir, Community Development Department, Senior Planner. Yes, this is a sign exception for the Schenko Company's tenant space at one nine nine zero zero Stevens Creek Boulevard. Little bit of background on the site, as you recall, if you've been here for a while, this used to be Scandinavian furniture and then recently, probably within four or five years ago, this was re-tenanted and demised to include three different tenant spaces, half of which is Schenko on the eastern half and the other is Intero and I believe in the back, the dance academy, thank you, on the lower left corner over there. It fronts exclusively Stevens Creek Boulevard and is surrounded by a mix of uses, including office to the north, high-density residential also to the north as well as residential to the east-west and single-family to the south, as well as retail to the west as well. On September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, at an administrative hearing, Schenko received an ASA approval for facade improvements to the, two facades for the Schenko property. And part of that approval was not the signs. So typically with those ASAs, any sign, these, these ASAs are conditioned to have any future signage would have to, or not approve this part of this discretionary review. So what are the tenant, the Schenko tenants proposing to do? So as mirrored in the staff report, we have two separate elevations, two, two separate versions of each elevation. So the top over here, you have the, the existing north elevation with the existing sign that's right there. In the bottom, you have the proposed elevation that was approved with ASA, simply showing that there's going to be, the existing sign on the north facade will be replaced pretty much in a like-for-like location after the facade renovation right there. On the east elevation, currently there are no signs right now, as you can see, although there are some temporary banners approximately right here and also right here. But on the bottom of the proposed, that shows the proposed approved elevations, facade elevations that were approved in September of this year, you can see the two proposed sign locations, which are requiring a sign exception. One that's on the corner, that's right here, we would call it location one. And then right above the entrance, we have location two. So if we hear us talking about location one and two throughout this presentation, that's what we're referring to. So how does the municipal code treat wall signs and how many wall signs are allowed per business? And what are the thresholds for granting more than one wall sign? So what is permitted? So what the, the, chapter nineteen one oh four sign says is that each business is allowed one wall side on the exterior frontage. However, they may have an additional one, so there's three ways they can have one additional sign. The, the first way is that businesses with no ground sign and adjacent to more than one street or shopping center driveway, this business does have a ground sign. So for this standard, they would not be allowed another wall sign without an exception. Or they, they put a sign up that's directed to the interior project and not visible for any public right-of-way. They do have a, you know, even the east driveway, the east facade is, is visible for the public right-of-way. So they will not qualify under that. And it's a single-tenant building pad with more than five thousand square feet, which this is not. So what part of their proposal is, is allowed by right? So the north facade is permitted by right as existing. They have a ground sign, although they have a ground sign, they are allowed one wall sign. Location one, which is that one of those on the corner, although adjacent to a shopping center driveway, the business is not permitted to have a second wall sign since they are utilizing space on existing ground sign. And then location two, single business is not permitted to have a third wall sign. So therefore we, the applicant has asked for an exception to that, to that, that wall sign standard. So analysis, so when staff looks at these, these applications and in order to recommend approval or denial approval, in this case, we would have to look at the findings that, for which that, to, to help us analyze how, how to approve these. So there's three different findings, essentially the two findings that limited staff's support for all three signs was that, you know, is what they're asking, the least modification of the regulations in the minimum variance that, that is taken from the what's allowed. Further, is the intent of the ordinance one in which would deny a sign that could typically be approved elsewhere in the city? So when we looked at this, we looked primarily what, when we analyzed this and came up with a recommendation, we looked at what will require at least modification of regulation, the minimum of the variance. Staff looked at it and felt that an exception for three wall signs is far above the allowed number of wall signs permitted for a single business. So it far exceeded what we felt was, we would be comfortable and see that how much would exceed above what is intended in the, in the regulations. And allocating multiple signs to a single business is really contrary to providing architecturalistic harmony to signs as they relate to building design and quantity to allow good visibility for public and needs of business. So what does that mean essentially? The, the intent of the wall sign section of the chap, of, of the chapter for signage doesn't want each business to have over, be oversigned, you know, where a sign can have five different wall signs and whatnot. So really just maintaining that simple character for, for signage is what's really necessary for each individual business to advertise their, their services and goods. So what staff felt and as you read in the staff report, our, our recommendation was allow us for one additional wall sign along the east facade that could be seen as a minor deviation from the municipal code. So the recommended action is that staff recommends that the planning commission, in accordance with the draft resolution, find the project exempt from SEQA and approve the sign exception to total, to allow a total of two wall signs. and approve the sign exception, uh, to total, to allow a total of two wall signs. And that concludes my presentation. Oh, and excepts the project, if, if it's approved, uh, decision of this project's final unless an appeal is filed within fourteen calendar days of the date of the decision, all approvals granted by the hearing, uh, by the planning commission, excuse me, shall go into effect after fourteen days. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Does the applicant have a presentation? Okay, welcome. Where's Tom Shane?
Play in Denver right now, but often Thailand. Oh, maybe right here. This, is this a?
There we go.
Oh, that's my email. You guys don't remember. Okay, there we go. All right, so hi, I'm Dani Cockens. I'm with Shane Company. Um, I just want to say, um, we're happy that we've been here for so long and it's been a long journey to get to our new site in, on Stevens Creek. Um, if you guys might have remembered, we were on Deansa, if I'm saying that correctly, and had, were forced to move. We looked a lot of spaces. We looked outside of the city.
No, you were on Stevens Creek.
Yes. Oh, Deansa and Stevens Creek, right?
Oh, I thought you were over by the Oaks.
Isn't that Deansa? Like across from the college?
Right.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, not Deansa.
Sorry.
Oh, Deansa College, not Deans Boulevard. Okay.
Deansa College, sorry. Yes, so we were over there for many, many years and we're forced to move. Um, and we looked all over the, um, area and we're happy that we were allowed to and found a space in Cupertino. Um, what I would say is since opening that store-
Sorry to interrupt. Could you move closer to the microphone?
Yes, I can. No one's ever told me I'm not loud enough. So, but, um, yeah, so in, open, since opening that store in September of twenty twenty-one, we have struggled for traffic. We were really hoping it would drive more traffic, being a newer store. Um, we think primarily this is because the area is not seen as a retail, uh, zone and not being able to turn left into the parking lot off of Stevens Creek. It's, you know, you have to go up to the light, make a U-turn. Um, and then also just COVID and the lack of return to work. We are not seeing the customers we used to see pre-COVID. Um, so that has required us to spend more marketing dollars outside of Cupertino to try to draw more people into the store. Um, and these might be people that are not as familiar with your community as previously, um, pre-COVID. So this is the reason we are here. And, um, we also, this space was slated for six or seven tenants and we took one half, the whole half. Um, and so what I'm showing now is a sign of, or a drawing of the previous approved plan. It looks like in, uh, twenty twenty, this was approved for ten signs on our side. Um, so we feel like we're asking for three. And we are also using a limited amount of square feet. Based on our calculations, we were doing, we're allotted three hundred and twenty-two square feet and with the two signs on the east side of the parking lot, we're only at sixty-four square feet with those two signs. So, and then I just wanted to pull up the plan. So, and obviously that secondary, we see the one sign on the street-facing side helping us draw that street traffic in. And the secondary sign is a sign above the door to indicate where the door lives and helping draw our customers in. It's really all, I have any questions?
Any questions before we move to public comment? Yeah, we may have questions later.
Yeah, okay, I'll sit down.
Yeah, first, we're going to have public comment. Do we have any cards? And nobody raising their hand on Zoom? Let me see.
One, one hand raised on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Hold on, let me, um, let me go there. Okay, welcome, San Ar.
Yes, good evening, Chair and Planning Commission. Uh, I'm very familiar with this location. Right behind the Shane Company is the Dance Academy. And I almost done daily drops and picks to the Dance Academy ever since that facility opened. And if you ever visit the site, especially in the evenings, you'll find that that is a site of major traffic that is attempting to turn right because of the Dance Academy and a large number of drops and picks that happen at that location. And I'm concerned that as you start adding these illuminated signs in particular, that it is going to cause more of a distraction for the right turns that are happening as well as the slowdown of the right lane, that is Stevens Creek eastbound, as you approach the Shane Company. So I urge the Planning Commission to please not approve this and to please do a site inspection and a traffic study in this area and assess what the safety impact to Stevens Creek eastbound traffic is going to be. Because if you notice at the junction, the rightmost eastbound lane clogs up all the way from Safari Kid or the pizza place onwards as it approaches the light at Blaney. And then as you go past Blaney, that whole right lane clogs up in the evenings with traffic trying to attempt to make a sharp right turn near the Shane Company and cars continuously coming out of that parking lot. So my first concern would be any sort of additional illuminated signage there is going to be a major issue in terms of traffic and safety of that right turn. My second concern is going to be the precedent that you're setting here. We just had this LED signage issue with the self-storage and here we are again. We're doing another exception. If you need to keep doing these exceptions, why do we need a Mooney code at all? We should get rid of the Mooney code. I don't understand why the city staff keep bringing these exceptions to you and opening the door for the precedent that it sets. That property alone has three tenants and the Dance Academy is even more disadvantaged being at the interior part of that property. Are we going to see more sign exceptions for the Dance Academy next? And for Cala Williams, which is also located there? And what about the other retail tenants on Stevens Creek? So I request you not to approve this and to assess the traffic impact as well as the precedent it sets with all of these LED signages popping up and impacting traffic on Stevens Creek with distractions. And finally, the third and most concerning for me is going to be, sometimes discretion is the better part of valor. And we know how much retail theft has been happening of late. And the Shane Company unfortunately has been a target in the past, as we recall from the Oaks. So more prominent advertising on Stevens Creek may attract the wrong type of attention. I'm particularly concerned because there's a number of kids at the Dance Academy that can be at risk.
Okay, thank you.
If it's subject to admissions.
Thank you, you're out of time. Okay, so we can bring it back to Planning Commission. Um, I was there at the time that, uh, San was talking about this evening. And indeed, the traffic does back up, um, on eastbound Stevens Creek. I couldn't figure out what the jam was, but it was everyone coming out of the parking lot, presumably from the Dance Academy. Um, so I have one question. How are they able to have all these signs there now? I went there today and they've got, took pictures. They've got enormous signs over the door, um, two of them that I saw. Are those not covered by our sign ordinance or what? Because they're banners?
Well, the temporary signs are. And, you know, they're supposed to be temporary, so we could be looking at that. But that's a separate issue that we can discuss with the, with the-
So they got permits for those banners, right?
Um, not, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Chair, I think I need to disclose that I went to the site today.
Okay.
Um, and I, uh, visited one of the homes that, uh, in that portal complex. I went upstairs to look through their windows to see how much the lights came into their home. Um, that was tonight.
Okay, and, yeah, I'll disclose, I also went to the site, um, early evening, probably around four-thirty or five, just to, um, check it out. Did, David, did you go?
I did not. I was not able to go, uh, I was rushing back from Palo Alto. Uh, so I, I did not. Although I have to say, I, I was a little surprised. I did look on Google Maps to see what, what was there. And, you know, there appear to be signs in, you know, large signs in those locations. I, I, you know, I understand they may be temporary and not lighted.
Okay, um, and I did buy something from Schenko in nineteen ninety-three. I should disclose that as well. Okay, um, I kind of agree with our staff recommendation that one additional wall sign would be acceptable except it should not be lit because it will affect the residents, um, to the, to the east of, of Schenko. Um, so I, I would, I'm not thrilled about it, but I would be, I would accept the one additional sign as long as it's not LED lit, um, so.
Chair, if I may, and again, this is just as clarification to help you make your decision. Um, the sign itself is not internally lit. It is halo lit, meaning that the, the, the lettering is opaque and the lighting is sort of behind it. But again, I just wanted to offer that up as information for you.
I would favor an unlit sign, whether it's internal or behind it. Um, but not the, but only, only one additional one, like over the door. Um, because I do see how there's, you know, you might want to, some indication of where the entry door is. Although I can't imagine that this extra sign is going to result in any additional business. Everyone knows, you know, we hear all the advertisements for Schenko. We all kind of know, you know, where, you know, where it's located. So I don't think this is going to solve, do anything to solve the issue of, um, reduced business since they've moved.
Um, so from my perspective, yeah, I, I walked around. I mean, I drove there and I walked around. Um, I think I agree with staff recommendation. I don't think they need three signs. Uh, that seems excessive. And, um, to, to Chair Scharf's point, I don't know that a sign above the door is needed actually since they're doing the, the new facade, uh, which will call attention to where the door is. And you can put potted plants or something to attract attention to that, um, to that location as well. And it, it won't help with the marketing anyway because you're already in the parking lot by the time you see that sign. Um, I think the, the sign closer to the, to the street, um, I think that would be okay. So I, like I said, I went into, uh, a residence's, uh, upper floor and looked out the window to see how much light comes into their home. And if it's close to the street, there's a lot of other lights. So I don't think it really affects them very much. Um, but having a lighted sign near the entrance door would definitely affect them. Um, so, so I would be okay with having that one lit. Um, if they absolutely have to have a sign by the door, I would say it needs to be unlit. Um, but I, again, I don't think it's necessary. Um, so, so I would be okay with approving, um, the recommendation as written by staff except to ensure that when we say a total of two signs that we specify that the second sign is the one closest to the street. Because I didn't see that specified. It just said total of two signs.
If, if it helps, uh, I, I, I have the location one, location two. So if you refer to location one, I assume.
Yes. Yes, that's good.
Right, so location one is kind of a given? That's their one wall sign they're allowed?
No, it's-
Location-
It's a different-
Location one is the new wall sign close to the street.
Okay.
To the existing one facing the east.
It's like around the corner.
Oh, because they already have one, um, Stevens Creek, okay.
Yeah.
Previous page.
Uh, the only other thing I would add is the sign that is lit currently that's facing Stevens Creek right now, um, is not that bright. Um, so I, you know, we had looked at storage, uh, that was way brighter. So this is not, um, as offensive. So I would be okay with having location one.
Okay, so, so from my standpoint, I, I would also support the, um, the staff recommendation. I think that, uh, uh, so one of the things I would be concerned about is that the, the application of the regulations to a building which is subdivided across many tenants because there is actually effect of having more, you know, there's the realtor's sign on the front already. Um, I think that actually is a justification for the door sign though because there is, you know, that there is a number of businesses that are in that, you know, when you go into the parking lot. So-
There's a big fat ground sign.
Uh, okay, uh, yes. Yeah. So, so I, I guess I would actually, my, my preference would be, I believe in the, uh, chart you had, that would be position two, which is the door location. Uh, I don't think there's a problem with it being lit. Uh, I would, uh, I'm not sure that the resolution with, with, with this public storage has been quite what, what everyone's expected. But it would be my expectation that, you know, after hours for that business, that they probably would not turn on that sign or turn it on at lower, um, lower illumination, the parking lot sign. Um, I think that the, the limitation on the number of signs, if, if there's a kind of aesthetic, um, uh, objective there, I think the, having it on the corner of the building, having two signs adjacent doesn't, that doesn't, I think that that was probably what, what the sign ordinances were trying to, uh, to discourage. So, uh, now, yeah, it might, it might appear better with, uh, you know, with a permanent sign that's, that's a kind of halo lighting. But, uh, but that, my, uh, I, I guess I would, I would prefer to not see a, uh, the two adjacent signs there. I, I do realize that that is more visible from Stevens Creek. Uh, but I think that with the street sign, with the regular street sign and the, and the outward-facing sign, you probably have that covered.
Hey, uh, Mooney?
Okay. I was just looking at, you know, Google Maps, like, um, and I was like, man, you know, how many signs is they need, right? That, that was a immediate reaction because I already see four. One on the floor and, you know, the two on the corner, one facing Stevens Creek and one facing the parking lot. And there's one on the door, right? So to me, this sounds like, you know, way too many signs. Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm okay with, you know, the one facing on the Stevens Creek and one above the door not lit because there are residences on both sides, even the Stevens Creek side across the street. I believe, you know, those are condominiums, you know, ground floor, uh, retail and, uh, and, and the residence dock. So I, I would like, you know, all of these signs to be, um, you know, turned off, you know, after like, you know, ten hours of that and minimally lit. And, uh, you know, my thinking is, you know, the, let me look at the location. So I, I kind of agree with, you know, David. Um, location one is a no for me because there's already one on the not, not sign bill, not side that's, you know, pretty close. Location two, I'm okay so long as, you know, it's not lit.
Okay. Anybody else before we make a motion? So location two is above the door, right? Okay.
Correct.
So-
Yeah, location two is above the door.
You know, I'll make a motion approving a sign exception to allow an additional wall sign at location two provided it is unlit at the existing retail building on nineteen nine hundred Stevens Creek Boulevard. This is for application EXC twenty twenty-two oh oh four. Why is it twenty twenty-two?
Um, the application was it came in, uh, so even further back, uh, in twenty twenty-two, they, they were approved to extend five hundred square feet of their, of their footprint. Um, they chose to reduce their scope. Uh, it came in, so this exception came in around the same time, so.
Okay. Very good. So anybody want to modify my?
I don't have a problem with that sign being lit, but, so I won't, I won't second it, but-
I'll second your motion.
But I, I can live with it if, if that's what people want to do.
All right, so Mooney seconded. Can we, uh, have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Fung?
Aye.
Commissioner Linsckog?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mahdi Patla?
Yes.
Chair Scharf?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimity with mystery absent.
Okay, uh, very good. Let's see, where are we now? Yeah, one second. Let me close that. Sorry, let me just use the paper copy then. Okay, so we have no old business, um, we have no new business. Do we have any staff and commission reports? Anything from staff?
Nothing. Well, actually, I might have an announcement. Um, we, as commission may be aware, we did receive the rise development modification plans. Um, and- aware, we did receive the rise development modification plans. And the the project description is available online at Cupertino.gov slash Valco SB thirty-five, in case anybody's interested. And the project is must be approved within sixty days as required by state law.
So is that ministerial approval? So it wouldn't come to Planning Commission or?
That's right, ministerially. That's what state law requires.
So the staff has to determine that.
Yes, we'll review it within the required timelines.
Okay. Okay.
No, no Planning Commission involvement, no City Council involvement on approving this change.
As required by state law. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any staff or commission reports? No. Okay, so we are on to future agenda setting. As one of the members of the public, I believe it was Peggy Griffin, mentioned, compared to other cities, we seem to have no involvement of Planning Commission or Housing Commission or City Council on our housing element. Can we put that on a future agenda? Or what is the reason why we are differing from Los Altos and other cities in terms of housing element discussion?
We did submit a revised second draft to HCD pursuant to some interim interim comments that we received from them. We anticipate that we will be scheduling something with the Planning Commission and City Council on that.
So when? I mean, isn't time of the essence here?
We're expecting comments back from HCD on December fifteenth, on or before December fifteenth. And once we receive those comments, we'll evaluate and we'll be scheduling something with the appropriate commissions and council.
Very good.
I just wanted to add, sorry to jump in late on the meeting, but since the housing element came up, I felt obliged to get up. I think we had talked at the last Planning Commission about having this as a future item, possibly as a joint hearing with the Housing Commission. We have been waiting and are expecting to get comments from HCD on this Friday. It is unlikely we would get them sooner and we were hoping to schedule something early January, early February next year after we have those comments on the second draft back. So I think that had been our timing to get this before both commissions, Housing Commission as well, because it's been over a year since they've seen this as well. So that's the goal at this time. I wish I knew what we're we're going to get on Friday, but we'll know better in a few days, hopefully, what HCD is saying.
So they could, they could approve it or they could send it back for?
They could. I think that would be unlikely that they would. I think we'll get a substantially more favorable letter than we did in May on the first draft. But we have fully expected, based on our conversations with them and our consultant feedback, that we would be doing a third draft.
Right. Okay. Okay. Anything else before we adjourn? What time is it now? It's only eight eighteen. All right. Very good. Thank you, everybody. Have a happy holiday. If we don't have another meeting, we won't have another meeting before then. Okay. Very good.